And we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's city council meeting. For those who are attending remotely, the camera in the council chambers is set up to show those attending in person tonight. We have a platform, the platform we are using has a raise hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click that button and be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Scally?
Here.
Council Dillaba?
Here.
Council Fisher?
Here.
Council Powers?
Here.
Council Reish?
Here.
Council Scamperley?
Here.
Quorum present.
Would you not have any presentations or public hearings tonight? So this brings us to personal appearance. At this time, anyone attending in person would like to address council. Please come down to the podium and you will have five minutes.
Good evening, I'm Michael Thule. I'm a citizen living in Augsburg. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My comments tonight focus on the preliminary 2024 city budget presented to you at the last meeting. First, I encourage the city council to set a public hearing as soon as possible pertaining to the override of the general fund property tax cap into 2024 and to subsequently adopt a resolution approving such an override. In my opinion, it would be catastrophic to the city in terms of reduction of essential services and/or reduction of the fund balance to a dangerously low level if the tax cap is not overridden. At first glance, I believe the proposed 2024 general fund budget offered to you by the city administration is a reasonable starting point for discussion. Observations and questions based on my initial review. One, what is the status of health insurance for 2024 for city employees? Two, pertaining general fund revenue, line 1560 code enforcement, why the increase from $27,000 to $54,000? Line 2143 outside water users. The proposed budget of $90,000 is the same as it is in 2023, but revenue through August 31st of this year is $92,844. Is there an opportunity to slightly increase this budget line for next year? And then line 2770 miscellaneous receipts, 2023 budget is $23,000, 24 budget is $80,000, current year revenue through August 31st is $111,860. Why such an increase? Next, in terms of general fund expense, section 1010 city council. It appears there may be at least three new members of city council beginning in January that have no prior experience serving as a councilor. I suggest monies are budgeted for workshops and other in-service education opportunities in governance with new members. I believe NICOM offers such workshops. If the city is not currently a member of NICOM, I suggest membership be reconsidered in 2024. Section 1230 city manager, is the budget for professional training sufficient? This year $10,052 has been expended. And then section 1420 law, why is there an increase in the budget from $175,000 to $200,000 now? Next, in regards to the water fund, why is there a decrease in the transfer to general fund from $550,000 and changed to $400,000? And while I support the attempt to fund reserves in the water fund, I think a more incremental approach should be considered. The 2024 budget includes $125,000 for a transfer to reserve. I suggest reducing this to $75,000 and reducing the unmetered water revenue line by $50,000. This would reduce the increase in this revenue from 4.4% to 1.4%. Secondly sewer fund, again, why the decrease in transfer to general fund from $531,000 and changed to $400,000? B, what is the transfer to capital fund of $217,000? Somewhat hampered in doing analysis since there's no December 31, 2022 audit yet available. The 2021 audit shows nothing due to other funds in the sewer fund. So I wonder what the need is for this transfer to capital fund and if this capacity be reduced? And then in regards to possible use of fund balance in the water fund and/or the sewer fund. If the increase in water and sewer rates cannot be reduced by other means, I suggest use of their respective fund balances to spread out over time to request an increases in 2024 by city administration. The December 31, 2021 audit shows a water fund with a fund balance of $2.5 million and the sewer fund a fund balance of $3 million. I suggest these fund balances are healthy enough to reduce the proposed increase of $113,575 in unmetered water revenue and the proposed increase of $266,151 in sewer rent, flat revenue in 2024. As was noted at the last city council meeting, we need to find ways to provide relief of the proposed increases in the water fund and the sewer fund grades when you consider the significant increase in property taxes needed to balance the 2024 general fund budget. Thank you.
Anyone else?
It's been a while since I've been up here. I'm Ian Loffler. First of all, I'd like to say I haven't watched many of the council meetings lately, but I watched last week, oh, the last council meeting and some things never change, same circus. I think what needs to be addressed right now is what's going on in the city. The thefts. It's getting ridiculous. Last night over 30 cars were hit. The city, the council, has never addressed this problem. In June of 2021, I stood right here and I addressed the fact of the thefts were increasing both day and night. Mike, you told me when I was done, all it was was bluster. Your former city manager told me all I was trying to do was instill fear. Well, how'd that work for you guys? It wasn't bluster then and it's not bluster now. It's ridiculous. What do you guys plan on doing to help city police? These guys' hands are tied. When you've got two cops on at night? I listened to the scanner about, I was sitting on the front porch about a month ago. There was a, the two were called up to Claxton and at the same time, there was a big fight behind Midill School. They called the troopers in as backup. And this is nothing against the troopers or the sheriffs, God bless them. They do an awesome job, but by the time a trooper got here, it had broke up. We need more police. We need more patrols. And I, what do you guys plan on doing? You know, up on your marquee at one time, you had, you were gonna cut taxes. Fine, you did that. You're gonna rebuild Augsburg. Well, we got a pickleball park and a, and a new park, which initially started off, the city was only going to owe $400,000, now it's $4 million plus, but besides that, you've frittered away money that could have been used for officers. The drug ODs in this town, the thefts, the burglaries. We just had a murder of a young boy. During the daytime, we had an armed robbery of the night by a homeless person. Something that was brought up, the homeless, you guys last year and you just did nothing. Now it's night after night after night. You gotta worry when you go to bed? It's ridiculous. Years ago, you never heard of people having cameras. Now everybody has them. And now you go on, there's a security site, security camera site, day after day after day. Film after film after film of people being robbed. When I addressed that in 2021, I said to you, it's only gonna get worse and I wasn't wrong. What in God's name did you guys think was gonna happen? You laid out a doormat for every thief, drug dealer and drug addict to come into Augsburg and God bless you, you got it. You got it hands down. And Mike, you can smirk at it all you want. Shake your head. You always do when the truth comes out. Yeah, yeah, okay. And another thing I'd like to address. Two weeks ago, a very close friend of mine passed away from cancer. He was a 38-year veteran of the fire department, 65 years old. Over half his life, he dedicated to serve and protect the people of this city. And the city administration did not even recognize him or him. Not long before that, you had an officer who was a 20-year veteran from 1968 to 88, Milton Green passed away. He served this city. City administration did not even acknowledge his death. You had a city officer, Reed, pass away. And the only thing that happened then, it was write-ups in the paper about blue light bulbs down at the fire department. Any officer, police officer that served the city of Augsburg, whether it be one year or 2,500 years, should be acknowledged, respected and given the respect that they deserve. They served this city. They went in. You know, leading cause of death for a fireman? Can't.
Yeah, thank you, Ian. There'll be another time to speak, another two minutes. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone attending remotely?
I do not see any hands raised.
And this brings us to correspondence. Do we have any?
We do not.
Next, we have our consent agenda that the claims is enumerated in general fund warrant number 18-2023 in the amount of $401,393.84 and library warrant number 18-2023 in the amount of $0 and capital fund warrant number 18-2023 in the amount of $155,514.50 and community development warrant number 18-2023 in the amount of $0 and community renewal fund warrant number 18-2023 in the amount of $0 as audited, be and the same hereby are ordered paid. I so move. Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Council Dillaba?
Yes.
Council Fisher?
Yes.
Council Powers?
Yes.
Council Reish?
Yes.
Council Scamperley?
Yes.
Approved.
We do not have any appointments tonight, so this brings us to items for council action. Our first item of business will be read by Police Chief Mark Kearns.
So this is an amendment to the administrative regulations of the city of Augsburg. Be it, and hereby is introduced before the city council of the city of Augsburg, New York, and be it further resolved that the city council hold a public hearing on said parole's ordinance at the city council chambers at 6:00 PM on Monday, October 23rd, 2023. Be it further resolved that the city clerk published or caused to be published a public notice, official newspaper on the city of Augsburg of said public hearing the last seven days prior there to.
I'll move that. Second it.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Council Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Council Dillaba?
Yes.
Council Fisher?
Yes.
Council Powers?
Yes.
Council Reish?
Yes.
Approved.
I believe Council Scamperley would like to introduce the next item.
It's a resolution encouraging Governor Holco to sign Senate Bill S. 1466 and Assembly Bill A. 258 authorizing payments to non-participating or non-preferred providers of emergency medical services license under Article 30 of Public Health Law.
I'll move that.
Kathy, would, oh, you wanna? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Council Dillaba?
Yes.
Council Fisher?
Yes.
Council Powers?
Yes.
Council Reish?
Yes.
Council Scamperley? Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by city manager Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to enter into a contract with Lupini Construction, Inc.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Council Dillaba?
Yes.
Council Fisher?
Yes.
Council Powers?
Yes.
Council Reish?
Andrea, would you mind just giving a quick summary so people know?
Yep, so this is a resolution to enter into a contract with Lupini Construction, who specializes in masonry repair. They will remove all of the loose and failing concrete, which is currently fall hazards, and also prepare a scope of work to do all of the masonry repairs needed to address the masonry of all of city hall. That is what the city needs. Should we go forward and apply for grants in the next year?
I vote yes.
Council Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Public Works Director Shane Brown.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement with Viking Sibby's for the purchase of a blue rock DL 16 foot by 70 inches by 80 inches dump truck box.
Move that. One second.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Council Fisher?
Yes.
Council Powers?
Yes.
Council Reish?
Yes.
Council Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Council Dillaba?
Yes.
Approved.
And this brings us to old business. Does anyone have any old business?
I had just, I had asked. I just, I've got a lot of people asking, Morset Park is gonna open, is it coming up soon?
Under new business, I mean, under new business, I was gonna just mention to council that's a, just a reminder that the Ready official ribbon cutting will be this Friday, Friday the 13th at noon. The state will be sending representatives from the respective departments that have funded the Ready project. One of the Ready commissioners will be speaking. There'll be an opportunity for members of council to speak as well. It's, the exact agenda is being developed and we'll be doing a formal press release later this week, but we have just accepted substantial completion. We're working on the punch list and we intend to have it fully open Friday.
Great, thank you. Is the sewage treatment plant completely closed out?
Closed? Oh, you mean the project, is it finished? No. It's probably somewhere over 95%, but not quite 100%. We anticipate bringing an update to council on that at the next agenda.
And I asked in an email, I was looking for fund balance for all three funds, current fund balance. Could we get a copy of that?
Yes.
Yeah, that's.
Does, does anyone have any new business?
I have, I have one old, Mike.
Oh.
The cheese plant, where are we with it?
We have finalized the bid specs and they will be released tomorrow.
Okay.
The, the bid, the due date for bids is November 2nd.
Okay. Last one I have is the, I asked twice now on the New York State Restructuring Board, I'm looking for money for dispatch from, from them based on the fact that the county was unable to take over our service or they keep stalling. So has, have you contacted anyone? Do we know if there's any funds available?
We have a new contact at, with the Financial Restructuring Board and Angela and I have been in contact with that individual. We're working through one of our disbursements right now and this is also on our list that we're talking through to see if there is any available funds. I don't have an update from the Financial Restructuring Board, but we are working with them and we were in contact with them just last Wednesday.
Okay. Can you CCS on that too? You know, as far as the, the back and forth? Is that possible?
Sure, it's been over the phone, but I can put together an update for council.
There you go. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any feedback on the audit, how that's progressing?
Don't have any specific update. I know that they are working on it, it is officially underway. The deadline hasn't changed thus far, so we're still working on late November.
Is that it for new business? And this brings us to items for discussion and we will begin with city manager Andrea Smith.
So first I have, and we will get this uploaded to the website for the public, but if you could just take one and pass them down, and these have also been emailed to those members of council that are participating remotely. This is a revised copy of A5. This needs to replace A5 in your proposed financial recommendations that were submitted to you at the last council meeting. This is with regard to the constitutional tax limit. We have had some recent conversations following the last meeting with the Office of the New York State Comptroller and they have approved and confirmed various exemptions which go into the calculation of the constitutional tax limit and we do need to make a correction. So at the proposed 12.5% rate, which is what you all received last week, this page now needs to replace it and it updates the constitutional tax limit to 87.95%. So that's what needs to go into your budget, just as a replacement and again, we'll get that updated. And I also just wanted to take a couple of minutes to talk through water and sewer rates because we have heard now from, heard from a few members of council inquiring about the water and sewer rates and whether there's any opportunity to look at reductions in that and I'm sure, yes.
Sorry, I just had a question on the first thing. So we went, so it's 87.95% tax limit exhausted with exclusions.
That's correct.
So we were using exclusions that weren't allowed, is that, we made a mistake there? Wasn't it like 65%?
68.52.
Oh, that's, that's a huge difference, okay. That is really huge.
That's why I'm asking you to insert that page and there's no amendment needed since there's been no adoption. So if you can just replace A5 with the one I've given you tonight, that will be correct and it reflects the comptroller's review of the exemptions and it does remove a significant exemption in the wa, in the sewer fund, excuse me.
So even at the proposed tax rate that you proposed in the budget of 1658, we're at 87, almost 88% of our constitutional taxing. I'm just verifying.
Yep, that's correct. So.
Is that a whole true for future council or are there other exclusions that might
This, this gets all of our exclusions correct in accordance with the standard set forth by the New York State Comptroller's Office. But that does lead to an update that I wanted to just kind of talk through with council this evening with regard to proposed water and sewer rates. So again, just want to take one and pass them down and these have been provided via email to those council members attending remotely. They'll also be uploaded to the city's website this evening for the benefit of the public, although these are all just worksheets to show various scenarios. So the proposed financial recommendations set forth or provided to council on September 25th recommend a 4% increase in water rates. I've been, many members of council have said, is that really what we have to do? Are there other alternatives? So what I've, what I've worked with Angela to do is to show you what a 0% increase is, a 2% increase and a 4% increase. So I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to talk about why the preliminary financial recommendations included a 4% increase and then we can, you, you have these as you deliberate those recommendations and, and think through what the rate will be for 2024. So the proposed 4% increase in the water fund is based on the recent completion of the preliminary engineering report that we have been working on completing for our water system, which includes our water intake line, which was constructed in 1912 as well as our filtration and treatment building and the storage tanks. It does not include the distribution lines, which as you probably recall, we do have to do some work on under the requirements to do the lead service inventory, which is a separate project with regard to our distribution system. But with regard to intake, processing, treatment and storage, we've completed a preliminary engineering report that was presented to council and that does illustrate that in order to stay proactive, there are things that we do need to do to avoid being in the scenario that we were in in 2017 with our wastewater treatment facility where we had a consent order requiring us to make substantial capital improvements. Certainly that's something we don't want to have at our water plant and we don't have that now. We don't have any emergent needs, but we do have aging infrastructure that needs attention. And so the proposed 4% increase is a larger increase upfront, but it allows us to have fewer increases in the future and as we start to build a reserve to fund those capital projects that we know we have coming, including the potential of having redundancy in our water intake so that we don't have some type of catastrophic failure in our line from 1912, as well as dealing with some more urgent needs addressing confined space within our, within our actual treatment facility. So that is the basis without getting into details of the actual preliminary engineering report of why there is a 4% proposed increase in the water fund. But I have this series of worksheets that show you that we could go as low as a 0% increase in the water fund and what that would look like, keeping the budget essentially, keeping the operating revenue and expenses the same without making substantial changes there, just adjusting use of fund balance essentially. So there are some opportunities to look at a rate reduction, but again, just keep in mind that we do know we have projects coming up in that, in that particular facility and that is why I am recommending an increase. With regard to the sewer fund, obviously we're just kind of coming up on the completion of a substantial capital project and that comes with significant debt service payments. So the 12.5% rate allows us to make those payments. It also allows us, as Mr. Thule pointed out in his comments earlier, to start building a marginal reserve. Keep in mind, again, not unlike the, the water plant I just talked about, the capital project is, is exclusive to the treatment portion of our wastewater system. There is, our pump stations are also in need of significant repair, South Water Street being our, our next real big project on the horizon that needs planning for. big project on the horizon that needs planning for. We are currently under, um, process of updating and, and rehabilitating our Main Street pump station with the assistance of St. Lawrence County and Northern Border Regional Commission. So those, that's great news, but it doesn't get us out of the water. There's still, there's still four pump stations and, um, we have work to do at two of them. So there's still work to be done there and that doesn't even begin to address the collection system. So here you have three scenarios, zero percent, six percent, and what was originally recommended at the twelve point five percent. However, um, with the updated information we have from the New York State Comptroller's Office, um, it would be my recommendation at this point to reduce the reduction, the proposed reduction from twelve and a half percent to six percent. And in doing that, we would actually, uh, look at a constitutional, um, tax exhaustion of eighty five percent versus the eighty seven point nine percent. So I would like to revise my recommendation in the, to A5 to, uh, a six percent increase in the sewer rates.
Your recommendation on water?
I, I would like to hear from council what your thoughts are. My recommendation is a four percent increase. Um, I, I do not support a zero percent increase. Our costs are not going down in water and we know we have projects on the horizon. Um, but I think that somewhere between two and four percent would be reasonable and I would be happy to hear from council, um, your thoughts on that.
I think, uh, I think we've been talking about much needed projects, you know, with water coming up. I'd like to start building a reserve fund as well. So I don't know what, what percent translates to.
I gave that out at the next presentation.
Ninety nine thousand dollars.
Four percent would take the rate to, um, twenty twenty four would be two hundred and nine dollars and four cents. That would be twice a year. The rate is paid twice a year. Uh, I won't email you that. I had it on a post-it note. That's not there anymore. Two oh nine times two.
The increase rate is ninety nine thousand for the water fund. I, I believe.
Oh, I thought the question was the rate.
It was. I missed it. That's why I said, I misunderstood.
I, I, I think we need to start preparing. That's my thoughts. Certainly we want to go less than two percent.
I've been reading about reserve funds and authorization for reserve funds and these are just my thoughts and so in order to establish the reserve fund, it, it actually takes council, uh, council authorization to establish it. The criteria is established from what I read.
That's correct.
Right? So we can't really create it in the budget without establishing criteria, what it's going for, what's the maximum, what's the minimum.
Correct. So if council adopts some version of this proposed financial recommendation that includes establishment of reserves, it would be staff's recommendation to follow that up with the appropriate, um, resolutions that would be needed to be approved by council in order to actually, um, establish reserves, um, should council approve them in the final budget.
Yeah.
Guys, good. Do yourself. We're getting some background noise, please.
I just think we're doing it backwards because we're appropriating the money without knowing specifically what it's going for and what, what the criteria are. Normally you do the resolution first and then, then start putting money in. Once you've established the reserve fund and the authorization for it, then you put the money in. Um, it's like our insurance reserve fund. You know, I, I discovered that at one of our audit meetings and at the end of two thousand twenty one, it had eight hundred thousand dollars in it and I, I don't know when that was created, but to me, it just seems like an enormous amount of money to cover losses and I think it can only cover losses that you already have insurance for. And I looked at eight years' worth of information audits and the biggest expenditure out of it's like three thousand, two thousand dollars and there's money transferred back and forth. I don't know what that's about, but there's never been any. So we have nine hundred thousand dollars of, uh, taxpayer money sitting in this reserve fund that I just, uh, I, I don't think it's, I think it's way over. Um, I don't, I, I don't have a copy of when it was created or what the purpose was or what the requirements were. I know that interest from that fund is supposed to go into the fund and that's not happening apparently from the audit that I reviewed. So I mean, it's something to look at. It's not anybody's fault. It's been, you know, we've had this for eight, ten years, maybe longer. I don't know, but I, I mean, back in ten years ago, there was three hundred thousand and now there's over eight hundred thousand. That's a lot of money. People's money.
I think it was self-insured for a while.
So that fund pays the city's, our, our insurance premiums. Uh, it's paid into from the general fund, water fund and sewer fund and then it does fund settlements. Um, I think it was just in our last consent agenda that we had a significant settlement that was paid that funds, those come out of that fund. Um, and they're not typically small amounts. They can be, as you stated, you know, three thousand, five thousand. Um, but they're often, the last one we just, uh, approved was fifty thousand dollars. So they're not, they don't tend to be small amounts.
I don't have any information on that. But, but from two thousand fourteen to twenty one, the audits, there was, there was, there was nothing paid out. So this is like, this is probably like the first time there's been one. And it's just, uh, you know, a small amount, fifty thousand out of nine hundred thousand. And once you have insurance, anyways, it's just something to think about and and you can't, you can't transfer it to the general fund, but you can transfer it to capital funds. So if, if you had an open mind about it and reviewed it and everything, there's a potential of taking some of that out if you want a reserve, water and sewer and appropriating that for a, a reserve for water and sewer rather than using, um, you know, the, the money that has been allocated in the budget and that will get your rate down. That will help to get your rate down. So it's worth staff looking into and, um, I just think that it's, it's an exorbitant amount of money to be sitting in an insurance reserve fund and that's a possibility. Um, so while we're on the subject, I, I just mentioned that. There's also a transfer to other fund, A nine hundred, hundred and forty five thousand. I sent it, sent you an email on, didn't get a response back. I didn't know what that was.
I will get your response to that.
Thank you.
I have, are you done, John?
Yes.
I just want to, on that insurance fund, because I, I was trying to get to that last year and everybody told me we couldn't tap into it. But the only three times that big amounts were ever taken out of this, even in the last ten years, were in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen and twenty twenty one. And the line just says general government support expense slash two hundred and twenty five thousand operating transfer. Does anybody have any idea what that is? That's what it says each time.
I will work.
Do, do we just, like, are we just moving money into accounts when it's convenient or is it, you know, because it's pretty convenient right now to be able to use it with this budget?
I just made myself a note to prepare a presentation for council and the public for the October twenty third meeting on the, um, on the insurance fund. So I will work with Angela to do that and, um, that way everybody will have better insight as to its purpose and its use for the city.
Could we get that before the twenty third and an update or something so that we can use that as, as something to, as a guide to look for, you know, it actually to look into it also? Instead of getting it on that night, it's just, it's tough to, to go over the numbers and stuff when you just fed it right when you get there.
You'll, yeah, it, I mean, anything that we go over in a presentation has to be provided in advance with the agenda. So it would be provided to council the, the Thursday before.
No, no, I'm talking about like tonight with the, with the water and sewer thing. Didn't get it till six o'clock. So if, if we can get it a little bit earlier, so get a little bit more time to review it.
But you, I apologize that you got those late. Uh, they weren't included with the agenda because we were just putting them together tonight. So.
Yeah, if we have.
Well, then we should not have money agenda unless we know that we're going to be able to have, to be able to review them prior to it and not at six o'clock delivered and then six o'clock we, we start discussing them. No.
Uh, I think you're considered part of the previous, uh, preliminary budget. It's just a revision, right?
A5 is a revision.
Yeah.
It's not all a revision, Mayor.
Right. If we, if and when we have workshops and I've asked a couple of times for them, um, we would certainly need it for workshops.
Oh, absolutely. And as soon as there is an accepted preliminary budget, we will immediately commence workshops as we have always done in the city of Ogdensburg. So the council has until the end of the month to do that and I'm happy to set those meetings up as soon as that is done.
I, I don't think we need an accepted budget to do that. That's not in the charter. That's just, uh, something that previous councils did. I, I, I would like to have workshops, uh, as soon as possible and I would hope that the council would too and I don't, yeah, I don't like being.
I, I think it's worked out good the way it's been done. So I'm happy with the thing.
Well, it's going to be hard for me to vote for a budget if, uh, if we don't have any workshops.
So the process of the budget, as it is every year, is that a preliminary budget is submitted by the city manager to council. Council by charter has a month to accept it, uh, and workshops then commence from there forward, at which point there's another month, uh, plus or minus for council to amend and officially adopt a final budget. So, um, and it continues to be my recommendation that we follow the process that we have followed for the twelve years that I have been employed by the city, which seems to have worked out fairly well, which begins with the presentation, um, from the city manager, which you all have received as of September twenty fifth. And the next action is taken by council to accept a preliminary budget.
Accept or modify.
You have to accept a preliminary budget. Doesn't have to be this one.
No, it says to, what the charter says, first action by the, um, so I, I think the council's wrong all this time. The, what the charter says is by the thirty first, we have to accept or modify. So it's a choice. You can either accept it and, and my point is it's, it's difficult to accept without having workshops to understand it better. And
Modify.
To modify without having those workshops. So I, I think we need to have workshops in order for us to do our fiduciary responsibilities to the citizens of Ogdensburg.
I agree with the mayor. I think we should just, uh, accept this totally and then as it's revised, then set up workshops to modify it if we need to.
Yeah.
I concur as well. It's, it's, it's how it's always been done. It's how pretty much every other government does it. You provide a preliminary budget, you take that, you work it, you tear it apart or you rebuild it or whatever the case may be and you have thirty days to do it. It's, it's always been done that way. I don't see any reason to have to, to do that. We, we, we don't have any starting point. You, you've been with all sorts of recommendations that which, which could be valid, could be very valid, but could also just simply just create confusion. City manager's job is to provide us with a preliminary budget. She's done that.
And it says either you, my, accept or modify per the charter.
And if it's not accepted, then it's enacted.
That's not true. It, it could go back to being last year's budget.
You can make a motion where we can move on.
There, there is no, no second or motion. So, um, do you have, uh, other?
Do you want to second that motion to have workshops? Take a vote on it. Can you hear me? Can you hear me, Steve?
Nope. Yes, I can now. Um, yeah, I'll second it.
I think we should have a.
Why not work on it? I mean, really, think about it.
Motion.
And if, if everybody doesn't work on it and there's three, three people, three or four people that want to work on it, just say so. I'll work with you.
Then accept the preliminary budget and we go from there.
Uh, no.
It's a balanced budget.
I'm not, I'm not doing a four percent increase in sewer. I mean, water and an increase in sewer. I'm, I'm not, I'm not increasing personnel. I'm sorry, Mike. I'm, that's my bold.
That, that, that's fine, Steve. I'm, I'm not arguing one way or the other. She's presented a preliminary budget.
And it's, and I want to modify it, but I want to have workshops too. So because I've got questions on all these papers, at these numbers, that I don't even know the definitions of some of the things because we move money left and right all the time. And, and it's, and I'm not even sure some of it's right.
Well, we move why? You, you said it yourself. You, apparently there's money being moved all over the place. Very seldom have we changed any, uh, uh, lines in the budget in the last year, year and a half. We have done some with work orders and whatnot, but, but it, I wouldn't suggest that, that we're throwing money all over the place and moving, moving money all over the place. I, I don't think that's happening.
I'd like the money out of the insurance fund, Mike. Did you know about it after all these years?
I actually, quite frankly, yeah, I did know about it, but I didn't realize it had as much in it until I was, until John brought it up. What's that got to do with anything?
Because you go looking for.
Budget and then work from that.
No, no, I, I go, no, 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 that's not the way.
It has everything to do with everything because if you consider my idea and you move that and you move that.
Idea. It's, it's not about the idea is what I'm talking about. I'm talking, that, those are discussions that can be had when you've got a starting point and Steve makes, makes his points known. And that's fine. Those will be your points going forward. And if there's a consensus to accept something otherwise or go with your recommendation, Steve, then that's the final budget. That's how it works.
No. Okay, let's have a, a roll call, please, Kathy. To have budget workshops.
Prior, prior to the preliminary budget?
No, just workshops to work on the preliminary budget.
We have them after.
We haven't accepted a preliminary budget yet.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Let's, to modify, to modify the preliminary budget. Could we do that? Workshops to modify the budget, the preliminary budget?
That, I'm, I'll be ready to accept after we have the workshops if, but there may be modifications. Don't know that. They have the workshops and discuss the budget.
Yeah, I don't know why we don't want to work on it.
So.
On the roll. Motion is to schedule workshops, uh, as soon as possible to discuss the budget and, uh, whether or not we want to accept it or, or modify it.
Before we accept the budget.
Yeah.
Preliminary budget.
Preliminary.
Okay, Kathy, would you please call the roll on that?
Counselor Powers?
No.
Counselor Reish?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
No.
Mayor Skelly?
No.
Counselor Dilliba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Dead.
It's not dead yet.
Okay, so, um, okay, so let's move on. Did you have other items for discussion?
Uh, so the other item is with regard to the tax cap. Um, I know we had some absences and I just wanted to make sure, since we had some pretty lengthy discussion, if there were any additional questions from council members that were present or absent at the last meeting. Um, again, I mean, there, there has to be a call for a public hearing. Should council want to have all their options at any point in time? So now that you have this preliminary budget, just want to make sure that it's on the agenda to answer any questions that anybody has.
My understanding, uh, I think you said at the last meeting that, I can't remember was if you didn't accept or if you didn't do the two percent override, you'd have a $1.8 million deficit again.
So if you take the city's operations as of Sep-, um, October 10th, 2023, and you move them into January 1 of 2024, we would project a $1.9 million deficit. So.
If we.
Yes.
If we don't do the 2% override.
Correct. So without overriding the tax cap, we have about, it's 95,000 and change. So call it $100,000. This was the discussion we had at our last meeting. That's the increase in property tax revenue that you're able to collect in 2024.
Okay, my, my understanding, the way the tax cap works is if you, um, let us say we hold workshops and we modify or we accept the budget, then you go down to 2% tax cap and if there isn't a major, I'm, if there isn't five votes, it actually, it's not four votes, it's five votes. If there isn't five votes to write, to override the 2% tax cap, then what actually happens is the budget still goes into effect and the comptroller comes in. He takes that 1.1 million dollars in new levy and he puts it into a reserve fund with interest. And that is kept in reserve during 2024 and can't be used until 2025. So, um, so the future council would have to use fund balance or or reduce costs by 1.1 million out of a 13 million dollar budget. Um, or some combination of those two.
That's generally correct. So the tax rate would be the increased rate. The taxpayer would pay the increased rate, but the city would not have the benefit of that increased rate. That additional revenue would be kept in a reserve account as you articulated. Um, and then it would be, then exactly what happens after that, uh, is a little unclear, but it, it wouldn't be available until 2025, until the following budget was adopted. So the taxpayers will pay the high rate, the 1658, for example, say. But the additional revenue is not accessible to
Well, it's not, it's not a high, I mean, it's, it's the same rate as last year.
Which just is, is the same rate that is proposed in the preliminary budget.
So it's not a high rate because we're not talking about reducing it or anything. The rate stays the same. So they pay the same rate. The city wouldn't realize the revenue though, from the increased levy, which is around 1.1 million dollars until 2025.
Correct.
What, what do you see as the benefit of that?
I'm not sure. It depends how things work out.
So, yeah, if, if there's a one point, if we don't do the 2% override, there's a, you're saying there's a 1.8 million dollar deficit, but you, you can only collect 1.1 million from the increased, um, evaluations or valuations. Um, where's the other 700,000 come from? As, as, as a unbalanced budget, if that's the case.
So I, I don't really know that I follow your question exactly, but what I said.
Counselor Reish asked, if you don't do the 2%, you can't get the, the 1.1 million. But, and he asked you, if you don't go over the 2%, we would have a 1.8 or 1.9% or deficit. But if you can only take in 1.1 million on the reassessment, how does that kick it up to 1.8 million in a deficit?
So, we still got to figure out the other 700,000.
Well, you've already taken, you've already counted that money in obviously. So you've, you've found that 700 somewhere else is my point. So.
So what can I say, counselor? Just.
Pardon?
If you move everything from today, from what we are doing today into January of 2024, you would have that 1.8 million dollar deficit that we're talking about. What we have done in the preliminary budget that has been presented to council is make reductions to what we are doing in 2023. Um, so that there are cost savings reflected in this budget. Um, to keep us at the same tax rate. So that's what you're not accounting for. That's that. We have created a savings in the 2024 budget over 2023.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's really not a bad budget. I just think we should talk about it and cooperate, uh, in whole meetings. Uh, there's no way to accept it without understanding it. And, uh, that's what the workshops are for. There's no way to modify it without understanding it. Uh, so we, we all need to cooperate in the best interest of the citizens and, uh, I really don't think we're that far apart, um, especially with what was presented tonight. And, um, so that's what I would urge everybody to do.
The workshops will happen and they happen after the, uh, we accept the preliminary budget. We just.
Well, it's, it's, it's like, Mike, it's like, uh, John said, if, if the order for the, do the 2% is after you've already gone through this. If we just accept this preliminary budget and we don't do the 2%, her budget isn't, doesn't exist anyway. She created, you had your own deficit.
I think if we don't do the 2%, this, this city is going to be completely devastated. It, it's, what are we going to have?
Well, that's, I mean, that's an.
Well, then, then, then you should sit down and talk, shouldn't you?
Uh, yeah, so accept the budget and let's move.
Do the budget hearings.
See, and there's no, there's no opportunity to modify it between now and the 31st without the knowledge and the understanding that's, you know, staff has to share with the council. And that apparently is being blocked by not having these, uh, meetings. And there's no, there's no opportunity to have any feedback, um, to potentially modify. So if you accept it, then you have no ability to modify it because there won't be the votes. And the manager's budget automatically goes into effect and apparently that's what people want. But there are counselors that have questions. So, you know, you ought to think about it.
So in the budget presentation that I gave last week, I also included a proposed schedule of budget workshop sessions, um, under the, um, assumption that the budget would be adopted at today's meeting, accepted, excuse me. Uh, and budget workshop sessions were to begin, can begin as early as November, excuse me, Monday, October 16th. I suggested that we do them alternating with our regular work session. So we would essentially have a, a meeting every Monday until the budget was, um, finally adopted. So that was my proposal that I maintain my position that does continue to be my recommendation to council, that we follow the process that we have followed in the past that has worked for the city. Um, the council has been presented with a budget. You accept and or modify a budget and we then commence work sessions. So that continues to be my recommendation.
There was a motion on the floor to accept this budget. How many votes would it take to accept this preliminary budget right now?
Four, because it would be incidental to the discussion which is listed on the agenda.
I'm going to make a motion.
It's actually not, it's actually not on, it's not, there's not a resolution on there. So it takes five votes.
That is incorrect, counselor. It takes four and we have confirmed that with a city attorney.
All right.
Okay, get your, I'll second that for you.
All right.
Counselor Scamperly, just for clarification, your motion is to accept.
Except the revised by city manager preliminary budget.
Thank you.
No.
That, that would mean A5.
Correct. That's what I wanted to clarify.
So.
It's just, it's just the update to the constitutional text or to the, um.
A5.
If you make a 2% for water, four, 6% for sewer, hire two more cops, I'll pass it.
Well, I think that's, we'll, we'll probably work on that. I think we all want two more cops. I, I, I have no problem with 2%, but right, right now, let's, uh.
I honestly don't even need workshops. All I need is one, just ask questions and make some proposals. We can do that, we can do that at a regular meeting if you want to.
So did anybody second this motion?
Counselor Fisher seconded it.
I'm not doing it.
Kathy, please call the roll.
Counselor Reish?
I, I can't accept it with, uh, without understanding it and asking questions and I can't modify it without doing that. So I, I really think we need to discuss it, whether it's at a council meeting. I off, I said that at the last meeting. I emailed everybody offered last week. Um, that's a no. Thank you. I just want, it's important to explain yourself.
Your vote is no, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba?
No.
Counselor Fisher?
No.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Good night.
Okay, is, um, all, everyone talked about items for discussion. Is that completed for everyone?
I have one more, Mike. I, I want, I was trying to squeeze it into old business, but you went too fast. Um, the Hackett, Hackett's building. Where are we at with that?
So that is a project in which the city of Augdensburg is the recipient of a Restore New York award. Uh, but there is a private developer. So, um, I believe that the developer is working on the financing for that project. The last we spoke, which was last Monday. Um, I don't have a timeline for you on that, but I did just speak with him on Monday. Especially moving forward.
Okay. No, I just wondering, because it was a substantial amount of money and we, we backed off the cheese plant to go in that direction. And then thankfully we got the cheese plant money. But it's just, was there, I just was curious, is there a timeline to when this has got to be, like, something's got to start actually work or, or?
The timeline on both restore grants is, it's a five-year grant period.
Okay.
I don't believe that he intends on taking five years, but that is the, the grant period.
Okay. Okay, maybe I'd pop it in an update or something.
Okay, at this time, if anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down and you have two minutes. Is anyone attending remotely? Oh, yeah, someone.
Hello, I was here, uh, meeting before last. My yard still tore up and hasn't been repaired or fixed. In, uh, section 187-9, I pointed out last time I spoke, I don't need to repeat it. It clearly states that that isn't allowed to happen to my side yard or anywhere in the city. And it's up to the DPW director to, to handle that. Um, instead, city management, the city attorney and whatever other department heads that were involved in the letter I received from the city attorney determined that is inconsequential, which means basically it's not a big deal. Um, I would just like to know how individuals who don't reside in the city of Augdensburg could determine that this issue isn't a big deal. Especially when it's regarding, uh, Hoosier magnets and, uh, police officers, direct family members, parents and grandparents to, uh, turn a profit in their businesses here in Augdensburg. Can, can you answer that question for me, Andrea?
Don't direct, uh, any of us.
Well, can any of these answer it?
Just direct council.
Why would we just not do what it says in the municipal code and get the city attorney involved? Rather than just doing what it says in the municipal code, Mike? Is it because it was me personally or? Well, the fact that no one has anything to say, it's, that's interesting. Y'all have a good night.
Anyone else? Anyone attending remotely?
I do not see any hands raised.
Now I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the medical, financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person, corporation.
I'll second that.
Okay, now my second, uh, Kat. Uh, we do not anticipate any action. Uh, so.
Mayor.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reish?
Yes.
Approved.
Uh, I will make a motion to adjourn from executive session.
I'll say it.
Uh, all in favor?
I.
I opposed, adjourned.